Yes.
Madam Clerk, if you'll let me know when we're legal? All right. There's Michelle. Five o'clock. All right. Let me call to order the special counsel meeting for Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty five. Um, the clerk tells me that we are legal on time. Item number two, public comment. If anyone is here to make public comment, please come forward, name and address, two and a half minutes.
What else? That was fast. I just walked in. Um, Michelle Stress, five forty-five, Veranda View, uh, in Mount Pleasant. Um, I just wanted to say first, thank you. Um, I know that you guys are, were here at the Tree Task Force. We're talking about that. And I know that me and people like me that are always talking about the environment and talking about trees and trying to save everything are, it's, I can be annoying, I know, and people like me can be also annoying. But I want to say thank you for hearing us, finally hearing the people and the, the, those of us that are speaking for the trees. Um, hearing, really taking note of what we've been hearing. I just, I was given an article, I think it was from twenty twenty, from the Post and Courier. And it was studies done in two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, twenty twenty, and all saying the same thing. That, you know, we're doing kind of a bad job at keeping the canopy and especially Mount Pleasant. And I think that maybe now we're finally at a point where we're starting to take that seriously. And I just wanted to let you know that I thank you for that. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, the public comment is closed. We will move to item number three, which is executive session. Item A would be for legal and contractual items, discussion and possible action on pending litigation cap- caption. James N. Dearline, Jr. at awe and versus Commission of Public Works, Town of Mount Pleasant. B is personnel, uh, considering applications for the Board of Zoning Appeals, considering applications to the Historic District Preservation Commission, considering applications to the Culture, Arts and Pride Commission, considering applications to serve on the Commercial Design Review Board, considering applications to serve on the newly established Tree Task Force. Do we have a motion to go into executive session for the reason, reasons listed?
May for approval, Mr. Chairman.
And a second, is there any discussion? Um, and upon reconvening, council may take action on any item, including any subsection of any section, listed on an executive session agenda or discussed in executive session during a properly noticed meeting. All in favor of the motion to go into executive session for the reasons stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Please note, we entered executive session.
Not yet.
Nice to see you. Yeah, I'm just, I'm just here to see if y'all are looking at the big year. Good to see you. Yeah, you too. Sir.
Mike, we got to reconvene. If everyone would please come to order and let us conclude our business from that meeting.
If everyone would please come to order and let us conclude our business from that meeting. Please note what time we reconvene. No votes were cast, no action was taken. Are there any motions to result as of, uh, from our deliberations?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I have a motion to direct the town attorney to proceed as discussed in executive session.
And for clarification in the matter of?
In the matter of three A.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next, please.
Excuse me. I move to appoint Sherwood Flowers to serve on the Board of Zoning, Board of Zoning and Appeals.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, please.
Mayor, I'd move to, um, submit Christine Edwards for the position on the Historic District Preservation Commission.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, we have a new appointee to the Historic District Preservation Commission. Number three, please. Culture, Arts and Pride.
I'd like to move that we appoint Karen Smalls Holback to the Cultural Arts and Pride Commission.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four?
Item number four.
Commercial design.
Divine View Board. I move to appoint Timothy Keel, who's, or reappoint him, and then to appoint Daniel Cruz.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second? And a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And finally, the Tree Task Force.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to appoint David Quick to seat one, Michelle Mansour to seat two, Shayna Harris to seat three, James McKee to seat four, Edward Oswald to seat five, Deidre Kennedy to seat six, and George Greis to seat seven on the newly established Tree Task Force.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm, a no vote on this one. It's not a reflection of, of any one particular person, but I feel like we need a more balanced group on the Tree Task Force.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries by a vote of seven to one. Thank you very much. There being no other business on the special council meeting agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
I had, I had two bikes, they're, they're motorbikes. They're, 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 they're not, they have no pedals. They were this tall, that's by design. And as I drove here tonight, weaving in and out at high rates of speed in, in the old village.
Yeah.
Seen a room this packed in a long time. This is like my old days. Yeah, this is, nope. I'm sorry. I know. I turned it on first. Oh, we good?
All right.
Oh, nice, 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 nice.
All right, council members ready?
Tough, I mean.
Clark, are you ready? Council members ready? Please let me call to order the town council meeting for this Tuesday, July the eighth, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for, for being here today. Our agenda has been published before you. Items one and two will be our prayer led by Chaplain Dewey and then the pledge by Councilman Gary Santos. Please rise.
Let us pray. Lord, we just come to you tonight with, um, heavy hearts because of the situation in Texas. And we just, um, pray for those responders. We pray for the families and for the lives lost, that you would surround them and hold them up during this time. And also just hold up our first responders also as they minister in our midst. We ask you to be with this town council meeting, be with the mayor, all the staff as we move and listen to make this town even a better town. In your holy blessing name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, chap. Item number three is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Item four, public hearings, awards and presentations. Item A is a public hearing to receive comments on a five-year update of the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine comprehensive plan. You may make comments after that. That does not count as your public comment in section number six. But.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think you've covered it all. This is the pub, first public hearing, um, and perhaps first reading. We'll get to that a little bit later on the agenda. To receive comment on the five-year update to our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-nine comprehensive plan. It was adopted in twenty twenty. We have had our public, uh, input meetings. We've taken it to the planning commission and it comes to you with a recommendation for, um, approval. So with that, I'll, I'll answer questions if you have.
Are there any questions from council members? All right, we will get to the comment portion. If you would like to make a comment, please come forward, give your name and address, and you have two and a half minutes. This is on the comprehensive plan. This is not the public comment portion of the meeting.
And Mr. Mayor, two individuals did sign up to speak under this item this evening. And George Freeman is, is the first.
Good evening, George Freeman, fourteen fifty Bowman Road, president of the CAGE organization, community action group for encouragement. In the nineties, the council at that time told us that if we, you wanted to be heard by the town council, you should annex into the town. Many of us along Rife Range Road have done that. However, current council are hearing the words but are not listening to our outcry. We are here to request removal of Rife Range Road from the Mount Pleasant Way in the comprehensive plan. The ten to twelve foot wide sidewalk is not needed and was not requested. The existing sidewalk is more than sufficient for the number of pedestrians and cyclists currently utilizing the sidewalk. Charleston Moves is the only group I have heard make this request, and I'm most certain they do not live along Rife Range Road. Widening the existing sidewalk would only encourage illegal use of the sidewalk by those riding electric bicycles and golf carts. Widening existing sidewalk will create an unsafe environment for the residents who live along Rife Range Road and for the mail carriers delivering mail along Rife Range Road. Please remove Rife Range Road from the Mount Pleasant Way. It is ironic that later this evening, you are positioned to pass a resolution requesting county council remove a road that will travel through Laurel Hill Plantation from the Highway forty-one project. It is our understanding that the purpose of the request is to protect the green space and green in Laurel Hill Plantation. But in the case of Rife Range Road where we live, you have, you want to destroy green space and add a path equivalent to a single lane road. There is something wrong with this picture. Remove Rife Range Road from the Mount Pleasant Way. Charleston County taxpayers voted for the Habsin sales tax money to be used for the preservation of green space. The money proposed for the Rife Range Road, Mount Pleasant Way should be used to purchase property in the historic communities to prevent overdevelopment in these communities. Remove Rife Range Road from the Mount Pleasant Way. Thank you.
Anna Kimmelblatt?
George.
Good evening, y'all. My name is Anna Kimmelblatt and I serve as the Communities and Transportation Program Director for the South Carolina Coastal Conservation League. The Coastal Conservation League appreciates staff's hard work on the comprehensive plan update. However, we feel that some components could be improved upon or strengthened, specifically the sections on settlement communities, the cultural core component, and the resilience element. These elements are falling short of what we know the town can achieve. We feel strongly that the cultural core can be refined with additional input from community members who can better, provide better insights on what their community needs in terms of honoring their past and protecting their future. We hope that the town will take additional time to clarify how exactly the settlement community and cultural core sections of the comprehensive plan will work together to prioritize these vibrant communities. We would greatly appreciate the opportunity to connect with staff to discuss how these components could be improved upon, to better capitalize on the long-term land use goals of the town and provide better protections to communities that deserve them. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council and we will reach out to planning staff to discuss further.
Is there anyone else to speak only to the public hearing aspect of the twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-nine comprehensive plan update? Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Brianna Harmon. I live at three six oh six Deer Creek Road. And I didn't know we had an extra timeframe here to discuss, but, um, since we do, I would like to talk about, um, the, addressing of settlement communities in the comprehensive plan. And I would just like to say that, um, I don't know if they've reached out to like a corporate attorney, but maybe, uh, the settlement communities might want to band together and, uh, incorporate themselves and then, uh, just giving themselves the, uh, ability to better self-govern instead of being in the middle of the county versus town of Mount Pleasant. And I would also like. And I would also like to note, because I just, I just realized this when running for town council this past March, that those who live in Charleston County properties are not able to vote for members of town council. So we're, the comprehensive plan for town of Mount Pleasant should not be addressing people that cannot vote for y'all as leaders. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Anyone else? Alright, if there's no one else to speak on that, this public hearing on the five-year update of the 2019 to 2029 comprehensive plan is closed. Item B is blessing of the fleet check presentations. Would y'all please come forward? I see familiar faces. And Ms. Harvey, if you will take it from there.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Town Council. I promise I'll be quick. I read fast. But I do want to start by recognizing a longtime friend, a true friend of the town who helped us put on countless amazing events culminating in recent years with his live broadcast of the Blessing Vote Parade. TJ Phillips' recent passing sent a shockwave through the community he loved, who loved him back more than he would ever acknowledge, because in addition to being such a kind soul, he was also quite humble. It is fitting that one of our beneficiaries is an animal rescue for what we didn't know then would be his last broadcast. TJ had a passion for helping animals and he loved making people smile. We are beyond grateful for all the years he worked with us to make memories for our community and wanted to start this evening by honoring him as we present these checks. We know you're up there keeping an eye on us, so we just want to say again, thank you one more time TJ for being with us. With that, I made that without a tear. I didn't do that writing. Nearly four decades ago, the Magwood family brought Shem Creek shrimping families together with the town to start the Mount Pleasant blessing of the Fleet and Seafood Festival. Ann Magwood and the other wives cooked shrimp, sold t-shirts and sodas and put their kids to work supporting the cause. Town staff is forever grateful to Ann, Tressie, Jennifer, Melissa and Tara for all the work they continue to put into producing the festival with us every year and for all of the work that they did in bringing the Wayne Magwood Fisherman's Memorial Statue, which we just put up this year. If you haven't seen it, you should go see it. It's amazing. The award-winning festival is one of the Low Country's favorite pastimes. It aims to educate our community and visitors about the importance of supporting, supporting local fishermen while also honoring and celebrating this important part of our town's heritage, which has also made a lot of news lately. Eleven vessels were blessed this year, including the lead Coast Guard boat. Each registered Shem Creek trawler received $500 for a total of $4,500 in direct support of our local shrimping and fishing fleet. We encourage you all to ask local restaurants where their seafood comes from and help us promote the local and Wald American seafood movement by posting to social media with the hashtags JustAsk and Experience MP when you find restaurants serving local seafood. As this festival has grown, so has the need for community support on event day. Volunteers are an essential part of bringing this festival to life each year and our nonprofit partners put in a lot of sweat equity in return for receiving the net proceeds of the event. This year's beneficiaries, Meow Dog Animal Rescue and Rotary Club of Mount Pleasant, helped us fill more than 100 vendor shifts, or volunteer shifts, pardon me. Many town employees also volunteer their time with just about every department represented on event day. To all our volunteers, we are truly grateful. They were, they were great to work with and we are grateful for their generosity of time. Meow Dog Animal Rescue is a registered nonprofit working with the Lucy Beckham High School Veterinary Sciences Program to provide shelter, safety and medical care to animals in need. I just think it's one of the coolest things that I've seen in a long time. Relying largely on volunteers, foster families and donations to reach their goals, the students and adults who manage this program work tirelessly to provide care, make calls, process applications and foster forms, plan and run events and community outreach, help with financials and more, and to gain more real life, real world experience while giving back to the community. Meow Dog partners with local shelters, rescues and veterinarians to provide quality care to all animals in order to rehabilitate them with the assistance of many students, community volunteers and veterinary practices. Having adopted out several hundred animals over the last couple of years, they plan to continue to grow and nurture this program for many years to come and we are proud to support their efforts. Rotary Club of Mount Pleasant has been guided for more than 47 years by the principle of doing good in our community, the country and the world. The four-way test, objective rotary and the avenues of service express the club's commitment to service, fellowship, diversity, integrity and leadership. The Rotary Club of Mount Pleasant lives its motto of service above self through programs such as Backpack Buddies partnering with Low Country Food Bank to provide weekend food for students in three East Cooper schools. Happy Feet giving free shoes to deserving East Cooper grade school students with more than 5,100 pairs of shoes given since 2007. Providing a dictionary for every third grader in the East Cooper area with more than 26,000 dictionaries given since 1999. Giving grants to local charities like Echo, East Cooper Meals on Wheels, Water Mission International, East Cooper Faith Network and more. And granting four-year scholarships to local high school students. Wow, that's a lot those two organizations do in our community and for our community. So we want to thank them. I would like to call up now the Magwoods and my event coordinator Tracy Richter, who I could not do all of this without. And then I would also like to call up Logan McCarroll and Meow Dog Animal Rescue Board members, Mary Ruth Starr and Nora Lavick. I hope I said that right, Nora. And Rotary Club of Mount Pleasant's President-elect Ken Talmadge along with Louis Lee and Ralph Mancini. We are proud to support these two important local causes. We had a record-setting event this year, truly. I'm so proud of it. And we are thrilled to present them each with more than $13,000 to help continue their missions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all so much. We couldn't do it, of course, without your support and voting to support them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes item four B on our agenda. Item five is approval of the minutes from the June 10th meeting and the regular town council meetings and the special meeting and regular town council meeting and the May 2025 financial statement.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Item six is public comment. Let me just say this before we start. This is not a town hall meeting. This is not an HOA meeting. As it says on the agenda, this is a town council meeting and we operate under rules of decorum. We have never been able to allow applause or boos. And so you're speaking to council, you're not speaking to the other people because it is a town council meeting. So I would ask everyone to please abide by that and also abide by the time limit because I don't know how many speakers we have signed up, but we want all of your fellow citizens to have their, their turn. So thank you all very much.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we have many speakers this evening. I will call two speakers up at a time. The first speaker, go to the podium, please, and deliver your comments with the second speaker being a few feet, a few feet behind on deck, please. First speaker and second, first is Kathy Landing and second is Larry Kabrowski.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. As the state representative for all the neighborhoods surrounding the Highway 41 corridor, thank you for bringing this resolution to urge county council to suspend the Laurel Hill Parkway portion of the road to compromise. There has been so much misinformation regarding the details of this project. Chief among these is the belief that has been forced on the Phillips community for a while that without this road through 20 acres of trees and nearly 12 acres of wetlands, they will have to endure four lanes of traffic in front of their homes. This is not correct because the regional traffic modeling used is too aggressive. When the town acquired the utility easement that might be condemned partially by the county, it also acquired the rights to over 2,000 additional homes in Park West. This happened after the 2020 vote by county council. Park West and Dunes West are fully built out. The traffic models include neighborhoods that will never use Laurel Hill Parkway, such as Carolina Park and Darrell Creek. Also, the town completed the widening of Park West Boulevard to four lanes with roundabouts after county council's vote. This highly successful project created a bypass of 41 and is the path of choice for many residents who formerly took Bessemer Road to reach 17 South. In a traffic jam on 41, many people take Park West Boulevard. Thanks to town council, we already have a wonderful bypass of the Phillips community that was not available at the time of the county council's decision. Everyone who drives 41 daily needs the road to be widened, including the Phillips community who desperately need the center turn lane so they can safely enter and exit their driveways and side streets onto 41 without stopping the flow of traffic. When I called my contact at the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services last November to find out why we had heard nothing regarding their coastal zones permit, they told me it was the Laurel Hill Parkway portion of the project that was holding up the process due to questions that they had not had satisfactorily answered by Charleston County. The outcry of both South Carolina DES and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers from over 3,000 residents against this road was the most either entity had ever received in our state. Once the damage is done and over 20-plus acres of trees are bulldozed, plus asphalt is laid where extensive wetlands now exist, it will be too late to reverse course. What a terrible shame and waste of the environment and an estimated 50 million or more of taxpayer dollars it will be when people realize that the only cars that will use this road are the very same ones that already use Bessemer and/or Park West Boulevard to get to 17 South. I respectfully request that you pass this resolution to keep the 434 widening portion without disturbing Laurel Hill Park. With roundabouts at Dunes West Boulevard and Bessemer Road, Highway 41 can become a successful throughway for daily commuting and emergency evacuations that allows for the free flow of traffic and respects the neighborhoods that reside along its route. Thank you.
Thank you. It's an honor to be speaking in front of you. I'm Larry Kabrowski. On Charleston County Council. I represent much of East Cooper, including the Laurel Hill Park. I'm speaking tonight not as a, strictly as a member of county council, not speaking on behalf of the staff of county council, but somebody who's, you know, lived here for 46 years, loves all of East Cooper. I live in Salton's Island. My daughters and their families live in Mount Pleasant. My wife is from McClellanville. I'm here for two reasons tonight and humbly ask you to follow through on the moratorium vote tonight to complete that so to not put new subdivisions in the historic settlement communities. And Dickie Swears, who, who were tough shoes to follow, once told me that when you're on county council, you have to sometimes make tough decisions. You may alienate people that you love and respect. And although I'm here today to say, to keep the moratorium on the settlement communities that haven't been developed yet, I'm here to say to not put the road through Laurel Hill Parkway. I've been on Highway 41 for many, many years and I remember during Ugo, that's where I met my in-laws from McClellanville was the rural road. And I recognize that the community felt did nothing to bring the population here. But the fact is that Highway 41 is a busy road now. And I went up and down the other night four or five times. Nobody can safely, it's not an interior neighborhood road that a community can just go back and forth. I would say that as Ms. Landing said, the 434 plan would be better with a turn lane there and I'd be supported on county council putting overpasses or bridges so people could walk safely through. You can't safely just do that like a neighborhood road now. And I know in the long history of East Cooper, my wife grew up in a general store in McClellanville and Highway 17, one car passed a day. And her house was condemned to put Highway 17, the additional lanes there. So it's an ongoing process. And I ask you to, remember the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. You have, you know, Highway 17 and you have the road to Berkeley County and the go-bout, all of the things and this and that, the additional money and time and space. And I hope, you know, I can convince five members to redo it and not do it. And I ask you to, this, we went through the sales tax referendum and if nine members of town council who are closest to the people and a mayor come up with a resolution, which I understand may be unanimous, we need to listen to that. It's the people that decide, not to impose on you, but to listen to people and what they say. And it does mean something. If there is a unanimous resolution of the people who are closest to do that, we should listen. And that's my message. Thank you.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, we have seats available to my left and behind me if you're in, in search of a seat. Next two speakers, George Freeman and Mike Van Horn.
George Freeman, 1450 Bowman Road, President of the Cage Organization. I spoke earlier about the comprehensive plan and the removal of Wright-Marange Road from the Mount Pleasant Way. Its sidewalk seems like a simple invasion into a community. But if you live in one of the communities like the Six Mile community that I live in, this is one of many accumulative things that occur in our neighborhood. When the, we had the Highway 17 Corridor Task Force, we thought that a lot of development would be cut down in our neighborhoods because of it. There's a subdivision called Magnolia Village. It was supposed to be three housebreakers with minimum lot size. The council at that time, not you, I think only Mr. Santos may have been on council at that time, voted to change it. So now we have four houses, houses on lots, maybe eight acres in the Six Mile community. That's something we never wanted in our community. On Laurel Hill Lane in the Six Mile community, a lot of the property has been subdivided into tiny lots against our rejection with the sweetgrass basket overlay. I'm stating these different things because I want you to understand when we talk about why we don't want this 10 to 12-foot wide sidewalk in our neighborhood, because each little tiny little thing continue to eat away at our community like a cancer. It doesn't attack at one whole time and eat the whole community up. It's one little bite at a time. I've heard somebody say one time, how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And that's what's happening in our community, one bite at a time. So when you consider these decisions, these are why we're asking you not to do the things that we're saying. Because we know that these cumulative things add up and it is constantly eating away at our community. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mike Van Horn, Iron Bridge Drive. I hope you guys had a good lunch and your five-hour energy because looking at this crowd, there's a lot of things that everybody wants to talk about. So a couple of things I'd like to discuss this evening is, if we can, is item 9A, the discussion of the allocating of $10,000 to the Stone Schoolhouse Association. We look at you as individuals of steward of our money as well as the other things that you do. I'd like to recommend that we take the $10,000 that was placed as an earmark for the financial transparency for the online aspect, that we sit there and allocate that $10,000 to the school for help ensuring, you know, their roof is covered plus the $10,000 they're seeking. Also, I'd like to take a look at the potential, the $25,000 that was earmarked for the Greens Commission for basically the residential environment, environmental incentive. To me, that's just basically nothing more than a participation trophy at the taxpayers' expense. Items 10-1, again Laurel Hill. Everybody's pretty much here for Laurel Hill. We got to do everything we can to stop Laurel Hill development. The last thing I'd like to look at is also on item 10-4 is to encourage that we postpone anything that deals with the e-bike situation until council can get with the law enforcement and the school boards to sit there and come up with some type of curriculum for the students in regards to educating them about the e-bike use and also what the town wants to do as far as the restrictions or penalties that may be involved. Because again, at the end, all we're doing is impacting the lives of our children. Thank you.
Sam Spence and Rob Dewey.
Hello, council. I'm Sam Spence, Director of Public Affairs for the Preservation Society of Charleston with many members across the Charleston area, based at 147 King Street. I first want to say thanks for taking steps to mirror the county major subdivision moratorium for historic district communities. The Preservation Society was supportive of the county's moratorium as a temporary and targeted way to find more permanent solutions to relieve and respond to development pressure in communities like Ten Mile and like Hamlin Beach. So thanks again for taking those steps and I urge you to support it tonight. The topic of development, development pressure though is also why I'm here to support the compromise Laurel Hill Parkway project on Highway 41. And this is a compromise. You would be hard-pressed to find anyone who would voluntarily support a road through a public park, just as you would not support a community. a public park, just as you would not support a community-altering road widening project through a community like Phillips. But in this case, the development pressures originating from many jurisdictions across many boundaries have led to a compromise. A long public process has led to this compromise. Since this project began, Charleston County has debated and adopted a historic preservation ordinance. It has named four local settlement communities as designated historic districts, and three of those are east of the Cooper. One of those, the Phillips community, was named the National Register of Historic Places, celebrating America's first Gullah Geechee community to earn the designation as what's called a "traditional cultural place," characterized by continued stewardship and practice over successive generations. To be very clear, ongoing and growing development pressure on Phillips is a direct threat to those historic ties that stretch back generations, and that's why Phillips residents have compromised. Many of them, yes, will do not vote in the town of Mount Pleasant, but will be impacted by your decisions tonight. But rejecting just the Laurel Hill Parkway leaves Phillips holding up its end of the compromise without the release valve promised to alleviate some of that suburban development pressure. With no other proposals on the table to safeguard and celebrate Phillips, we urge you to support the compromise alternative and reject the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Mayor, council, Reverend Rob Dewey, 598 East Hockaw, here at Mount Pleasant. I'm going to get three things in in my time limit, thank you very much. On July the 4th, we had in Marion Brown, 70 people that came to play pickleball. So I applaud y'all, I applaud the Recreation Department, because we have it going over there, and the mayor even came and played with us one time. So y'all are all, oh, Gary did too, sorry, Gary. And that was on July the 4th. We have also been harassed at Marion Brown by the e-bike children, and I've got to tell you, it's bad. And these 13, 14, 15-year-old children come on while we're playing and then go right in the middle of traffic, and I applaud y'all for moving forward to try and get something done, because it's bad over in the old village at Marion Brown. The last thing I'd like to bring before you is from my wife. She did not get to sleep, and I didn't get to sleep then, because she didn't get to sleep on July the 5th until 1:00 in the morning because of our neighborhood fireworks. I have appeared before you all before and have raised this as a question, that a lot of our surrounding communities, towns, do not have regulations against selling fireworks and also shooting them off. And for those of us that have PTSD and maybe served in some type of military situation, it's not helpful to continue to hear those. And I would ask that staff or council or someone have a discussion on this. Can we learn something from other communities? Because they have stopped this. So those are my three things. Thank y'all very much.
Ben Brazil and Patrick McAdams.
Good evening, mayor and council. Ben Brazil, with Lumos Fiber, division of jointly owned by T-Mobile. I've spoken with most of you, I'm not going to take all my allotted time. I just wanted to tell you we're on the agenda earlier tonight. I am here to answer any question about our fiber optic franchise. That's before the council, the two benefits of fiber optic glass for broadband are, A, it's up to 80 times faster than the copper-based incumbents that are through much of the town, and B, it's symmetrical, so same speed up and down. Provided you all a letter two weeks ago, and you have a packet in front of you with some confidential maps about where we propose to go. We've worked carefully with the town administrator, the town attorney, and your staff for about six months to make sure we understand your process. We're here to answer any questions if so recognized. Thank you so much.
Hello, I live at 369 Caspian Court. We're right in the path of the Laurel Hill Parkway plan. I should have thought about what I was going to talk about before I came here, but thinking about it, the most important thing to me is the dense population of children that we have, and bringing in that extra road is going to create more problems. Kids across the street, e-bikes. I'm just really worried about it. I'm worried about the future of our children growing up in that neighborhood. I'm worried about the forest, the serenity, the extra cost, and the cost to our property values. So like, everything about this doesn't make any sense to me, and that's all I wanted you to consider. Thank you.
James Miller and Jackie Jackson.
Good evening, I'm James Miller. I live at 1709 Monk Place. I'm here as the secretary for the Park West Master Association as well, and I want to thank you for taking the time to listen to us and to hear our comments, because it's very important, the work that you're doing, we really appreciate it. On behalf of the association and the residents of Park West, two areas I just would like to throw my support for, and obviously, one is the resolution expressing the support for the Highway 41 compromise without the Laurel Hill Parkway. We do feel, as others have mentioned before me, that we are pretty much a completely built-out neighborhood, and the bypasses that are already in place are sufficient for the traffic. I have to drive through there on a daily basis. Apart from the time when the schools are in session, there really is not much of an issue in terms of getting through and getting to where we need to be in a timely fashion. And we appreciate you listening to us, and in addition to also, you know, the idea that the forest is going to be destroyed, and the parks that our residents are enjoying at this moment are going to be impacted. We do fully support the 434 portion of the resolution and would value your support in your resolution. The other thing I wanted to mention as well is, we appreciate you looking into and trying to figure out and address the e-bike situation. We on the association have been dealing with quite a few incidents that have happened within Park West, and we're trying to figure out the best ways to handle it internally as well. So we do appreciate you trying to figure out this complicated situation. So thank you for your time.
Hello, my name's Jackie Jackson, Jackie Rouse Jackson. I live at 1609 Highway 41, and I'm the granddaughter of Joseph Rouse. When you see that sign that says Joseph Rouse, that's my grandfather, and I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of my neighborhood, the Phillips community, and I am for the Laurel Hill Parkway, the plan in place to improve Highway 41, aiming to alleviate traffic and congestion. When you go, when you do not live in a community such as the Phillips community, when you do not have property to protect, when you do, when your quality of life is not being threatened, when you are on the outside looking in, when it does not affect you, it's easy. We all can come up with a solution when it does not affect you. We here protect the green space. Well, many of you in here, your homes are built on green space. Your homes are built on marshland. You are living and enjoying your homes, and the Phillips community would like to live and enjoy theirs without interruption. I have this article in last year, I believe in June, DHEC was at the Mount Pleasant, at Wando High School, and they put what I said in the paper, and it says, "The Phillips community does not want to bear the burden of the traffic coming from larger communities around us. Consistently settled communities that house a strong population of African-American communities have been viewed as cheaper options for highways and for construction in general. A price cannot be set on our quality of life. Recently, the Phillips community became the first settlement community in the state to earn a spot on the National Registry of Historic Places, and I'd love to see it stay that way." Thank you.
Sandra Connell and Brianna Harmon.
Good evening, my name is Sandra Connell, and I'm a native Charlestonian. I was born and raised here, grew up in Avondale, West Ashley. My husband and I moved to Mount Pleasant, Dunes West, 30 years ago, so I've seen a lot. And I can tell you that, one, I appreciate the two minutes of listening, but you guys, already our quality of life have lessened because there's so much development. We are all suffering for Highway 41, and, but adding the Laurel Hill Parkway is not going to help that. We already cut through that Bessemer Road pretty successfully, and actually, whoever tweaked that light was really great, because it's helped a lot, just being able to get out on 41 quicker. But I can relate to anyone who's been here so long, and we just feel like we have no voice, and our quality of life has gone down. And we see you, I see people trying to get out on the Phillips community. We only have one lane, and I want to let them out, but I see them waiting to get out, and I can't, because I'm moving traffic, so I can't stop and let people out. But if I had another lane, if we had four lanes on 41, I would move to that inner lane, and I would let people out. That's just a normal thing. But we really are working with like two lanes, but I'm asking you to vote yes, okay, let me get to not impact the Laurel Hill Parkway. That Parkway area has been around since, what, 1864 or longer? And Mother Nature's doing a really good job holding back the wetlands and the water, and I would not want to be the one to vote to mess with that, because you know the Low Country, and you know, when you change that, the flood zones are going to change, the housing, the roads all around there are going to be susceptible to more flooding during the rainy season, so don't mess with Mother Nature, would be my suggestion. Five years ago, 10 years ago, we didn't have a perfect example for our solution, and I think Clements Ferry has given us a perfect example, and so has Park West. They have added four lanes beautifully. They put some specifically timed lights, traffic lights, and it just, Park West did a great job as well. I know it's scary to think, oh, you're going to add four lanes in front of my house, but I think it's going to give you more quality of life, and I ask people who are against it to maybe take a ride over to Park West. But we're suffering. If you were to evacuate us tomorrow, we've got nowhere to go. Thank you so much.
If everyone, please listen for the beeps. Thank you.
Hello, again, Brianna Harmon, I'm at 3606 Deer Creek Road, and definitely agree with a lot of people on the Laurel Hill County Parkway, it just doesn't make sense to ease traffic in any way. It also would be filling in wetlands, clear-cutting trees. I also am concerned about the urgency of this now, being related to that giant parcel that you guys just had an executive session on our ongoing litigation, and I would like to find out where we're at with that. I'm very concerned that the county council's rush to get this taken care of is to put thousands more homes between Planters Point and the baseball fields right on the Wando there. So, and county council also is backing a sidewalk all the way from the Sphinx across 41 Bridge to 17, which would also impact the Phillips community and anyone residing right on Highway 41. So I just don't see how it all is coming together here. And I would also like to point out that the town of Mount Pleasant itself has been very much more reactive than proactive with a lot of these flooding concerns and getting entangled into these situations where county council recommends one thing, or Charleston County has allowed for planned developments such as Carolina Park, which the flooding is impacting all of the surrounding neighborhoods. The traffic has impacted us all, and the Carolina Park developer is not having to pay for any of the corrections that we are now paying for, such as the $230,000 study and multimillion-dollar culvert that, you know, everything from Faison Road north is all draining into the tiny little Alston Creek watershed, and it's overwhelmed, and we are experiencing flooding like we've never had before. So I just don't want it to get to the point of catastrophic, and I worry about Park West also experiencing this if more wetlands were to be filled. And my time, thanks.
Candace Johnson and Emily Weisch.
Candace Johnson, 2488 Cotton Creek Drive, I'm back. I'm here on behalf of the pet memorial Rainbow Bridge that we are proposing and putting in, which is, had something written out, but listening to everyone here in the community, it's kind of ironic, because where this came from was our dog Waffles, who passed away, actually, I'm 41, and was hit by a car because she was spooked by fireworks. This is not part of my speech, this is all just coming together, and she was our everything, she was my partner, she helped raise my three boys who don't have e-bikes, but there needs to be rules, so kind of all comes full circle. But I've been working with the town on getting this approved for everyone in the community. The memorial would provide a dedicated space for families, especially children, to honor and process the loss of their beloved pets. While nearby communities like Bali Beach already offer this, Mount Pleasant does not. I come to you not just as a grieving pet owner who lost a best friend, and know a lot of people who've supported me and have been in that same situation, and how beautiful it makes people come together in such a loss. But also, excuse me, I come with my expertise, I come from a background of construction and property management, and so I know what it takes to have high standards of upkeep and maintenance and quality build. Now, I just put this in my notes, too, Meow Dog, we actually fostered a dog from Meow Dog, Ray Foster, thought there's a thing that, full circle here. But this proposal is strong to support from multiple committees of the town, community members, and local businesses. With no financial burden on the town, the memorial offers an opportunity to provide a unique and meaningful space that enhances our community's spirit of compassion. And when I say local businesses, one of the largest local businesses, Southern Lumber and Millwork, has offered graciously to donate all materials. They already put together CAD drawings, which you all see, they will oversee the construction of it, so it's not even just a check passed over, and then also the home management company that I work for will manage the entire process, so throughout the years as well. I'm running out of time, but like I said, I'd like to take a loss of ours and make it something beautiful for everyone to come together, so thank you.
Good evening, my name is Emily Weisch. I'm a senior attorney with the Southern Environmental Law Center, which is an environmental nonprofit that works throughout the southeast with communities and conservation organizations to protect the southeast. We have also worked closely with the Phillips community throughout the entire Highway 41 process, and, you know, I read the town's resolution, I see that it says that it opposes the Laurel Hill Parkway, but also that it supports the Phillips community, and I believe the town council is sincere in those statements. Unfortunately, I don't think those statements can be true in this context. As many of you know, the Phillips community was burdened with a highway through the heart of its community over 80 years ago. The community has dealt with the entire burden of traffic along Highway 41 since then, and now, after years of effort and community engagement, Charleston County has proposed the compromise alternative to improve traffic and safety along Highway 41. And part of the logic behind that compromise alternative is that Highway 41 and the Phillips community cannot continue to bear the entire traffic burden of the surrounding neighborhoods. So instead of expanding Highway 41 to five lanes through Phillips, the compromise alternative expands it to four lanes on either side of Phillips, three lanes through Phillips, and proposes a two-lane Parkway along the edge of a 750-acre county park to route some traffic to surrounding neighborhoods. But let me be clear that Phillips is still the only community that will have a highway running through the heart of its community. The county's traffic modeling underlying the compromise alternative shows that every component is necessary, including the Parkway. SCLC has worked with an independent traffic expert to confirm that that is true. The criticism that has been voiced against the Parkway, and specifically the county's traffic modeling- traffic modeling is based on anecdotal experience and assumptions, and that's just not a legitimate basis to now oppose a thoughtful and well-supported plan. Unfortunately too, the compromise alternative will not destroy all Laurel Hill Park. It goes along the edge of a seven hundred and fifty acre park, in turn leaving the vast majority of that park untouched, so surrounding communities continue to enjoy recreating there. Although the resolution says the town supports the Phillips community, what this resolution does is it asks the community to continue to shoulder the entire traffic burden of the surrounding area. For those reasons, I am asking that town council not approve this resolution. Thank you.
Tori Sanders and David Spenden.
Good evening. My name is Tori Sanders. I'm the Communities and Transportation Project Manager for the Coastal Conservation League at one thirty-one Spring Street. Um, we are here to support the longstanding compromise for Highway forty-one. And my mom lives in Dunes West, so I'm traveling this road very often. This project has been in development since twenty seventeen with extensive community input. The Highway forty-one improvements only work in tandem with the Parkway as an integrated solution to reduce congestion. The county has been crystal clear on this. There is no Highway forty-one improvements without the Parkway. It is not just an add-on, it is an essential component of the project. Traffic models show that the four-three-four lane structure on forty-one requires the Parkway to handle diverted traffic. Without it, the county cannot implement these, those changes because they would be rendered pointless. The engineering is clear. This Parkway will provide necessary relief from congestion on both Highway forty-one and Bessemer Road. In addition to the county's contribution, the state's infrastructure bank has allocated sixty million um, for this integrated project. But this funding is specifically tied to a complete solution, not individual components. If the Parkway is abandoned, the entire allocation is at risk and traffic will worsen with no path forward. The facts about the impact of the park have also been wildly misrepresented. The Parkway would only impact twelve acres of the entire seven hundred and fifty acres. That's one point six percent of the park. The Parkway is also contained to the outer rim where no trails exist and there is very limited foot traffic. Additionally, the project has undergone extensive environmental review since twenty seventeen, examining water quality, endangered species, flood plains, wetlands, historic and cultural resources and more. This is not a project designed without environmental review. It is the result of it. Further, the project minimizes impacts to the historic Phillips community, who have long been disproportionately impacted by road projects. By voting to approve this resolution, you are voting to further marginalize Phillips and subject only them to the continued negative growth impacts. The choice tonight is between a comprehensive solution that addresses multiple community needs while minimizing impacts or losing the opportunity for any improvements at all. Rejecting this resolution means supporting a practical solution eight years in the making. Supporting it means asking the county to start over with no funding, no timeline and no guarantee of a better outcome. Thank you so much.
We're gonna ask everyone to please put their phones on silent. Please, out of consideration for your neighbors. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is David Speden, Combit three four two nine Tumor Count Circle. Thank you for having the patience to listen to all of us. Um, many of us believe we know what's best for the Route forty-one expansion, but I'm not here tonight with a motion. Hopefully I'm here with just facts. And the facts support a clear and responsible decision. Vote no on the road to compromise and any plan that would devastate Laurel Hill Park. The available Charleston County presentations are vague, incomplete and too weak to justify a permanent and damaging decision like this. We must return to facts, data, not feeling. And I may not have access to some of the things you all had. Would love to see that, but this is what I could find. The county's language is filled with consultant jargon and vague statements like environmental justice. That's a two-way street. Cultural landscape, things like potentially adverse effects. None of them are qualified or validated that they truly are, their potential. And yet these principles are not being applied fairly. In fact, community impacts have been minimized and not clearly represented under the road to compromise. So let's talk about some of the numbers. Alternate one with revised cost is probably up forty to fifty million dollars less than the road to compromise. Alternate one shortens travel time. The road to compromise increases travel time and distance. Alternate one affects more right-of-way acreage, but neither option um, displaces anybody. Environmental impacts, more wetlands will be impacted by the road to compromise. Protected land under restricted covenants are far more um, under the road to compromise as opposed to alternate one. The county has failed to provide any mitigation strategy for the loss of those protected and precious wetlands. Noise levels, residential impacts on alternate one, fifty-eight homes for the road to compromise, a hundred and five. Plus noise barriers, there's zero plan for alternate one, the two are planned for the road to compromise, but their size, location and cost and ongoing costs are not there. They're just vague and you can't understand it. And community disruption, the road to compromise increases risk to the higher density residential neighborhoods. There's been no analysis of pedestrian costs, crossings, vehicle speeds or safety risks. That all needs to be considered in this. This is not responsible planning. Destroying a beloved public park to build a longer, slower, more expensive road isn't justified, especially when there are better alternatives exist. So I'm asking you to vote no to the road to compromise and save Laurel Hill Park. Thank you.
Kate Dootley, Larry Kabrowski.
Kate Dootley, three twelve Harbor Point Drive. Good evening. I am here to speak to you on behalf of Historic Charleston Foundation and as a Mount Pleasant resident. We are in opposition to altering the design compromise for the South Carolina Highway forty-one improvement project through the Phillips community. The Phillips community is a historic African-American settlement community dating back to the eighteen seventies and is the first and only such community listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Since twenty eighteen, we have been working with the community and many of you on options for added capacity to Highway forty-one that would limit takings from the Seven Mile and Phillips community. The preferred option, the one that is best for the Phillips community, is the one that has some impacts to Laurel Hill Park. In the transportation committee meeting earlier this week, Mayor Haney confirmed that Mount Pleasant had already denied municipal consent to widen Bessemer Road through Park West, the logical widening option. If you choose to deny impacts to the park this evening, that leaves just one route for widening through the Phillips community. According to the county's traffic department, there is no scenario where only the park portion of the project is removed. Without the release valve from the widening occurring on either side of Phillips, the community would be the release valve and forty-one would be in good luck. The reality is, is that any move to change that alternative at this point could very well jeopardize the entire project. The residents deserve better. Phillips deserves better. The Phillips community residents have thrived in this place for the last a hundred and fifty years and the traffic congestion in Mount Pleasant along Highway forty-one is not their fault. The community should not have to bear the burden for the strain to transportation resources caused by the development that has occurred over the last thirty years. The Phillips community is vastly important to the Low Country and our rich and complex history. Any change to the design to reduce impacts to the park cannot come at the expense of an invaluable community. We encourage council not to take action on this resolution today until all of the ramifications to our historic communities are understood. Thank you.
Travis Kurson and David Quick.
Uh, Travis Kurson, on behalf of Smart Growth Forty-One, thirty-eight fifty Bessemer Road. As a Mount Pleasant and Park West resident and chairman of Smart Growth Forty-One, I want to thank you all tonight for considering this important resolution regarding Laurel Hill Parkway. The fact is, the Laurel Hill Parkway is a needless and unnecessary road that was born out of a so-called compromise process that was anything but. While some have argued this was a thoughtful decision reached after years of community input, that is simply not the case. First, first introduced in March of twenty twenty-one, the road to compromise ignores the years of public comment and stakeholder feedback solicited before that date because the plan did not exist and simply could not be commented on. Our organization of twenty-five-hundred-plus members have tried to be constructive partners in finding solutions. But throughout this process, and when we proposed other alternatives, it has felt like the concerns of Mount Pleasant residents have been ignored by the county council's representatives. That is why we appreciate the town council considering this resolution tonight. To stand up for its residents where the county has not and to force them to finally listen. We acknowledge that it is fair to ask all communities in the Highway forty-one corridor to do their part in addressing traffic challenges. However, it's important to realize that Mount Pleasant and its residents have already stepped up in meaningful ways. Park West Boulevard, as been mentioned, was recently widened from two to four lanes, a project funded by our own residents. All American Boulevard is going to be tying into Park West and Stockdale Drive is getting a traffic circle improvement. All of these projects have brought additional traffic through Park West and came with the typical impacts of road expansion, but the community supported it because it improved traffic flow and eased congestion within and through for cars traveling through the community. However, building a completely new highway is different. We do not believe the Laurel Hill Parkway is necessary, nor will it meaningfully ease traffic congestion in the ways that its proponents claim. The fact is, the proposed Laurel Hill Parkway will not enhance the county's widening plan. It is redundant, it is unnecessary, and it threatens one of the last preserved natural areas in our region. Passing this resolution tonight sends a strong message that Mount Pleasant will not allow destructive and ineffective transportation planning to dictate our community's future. Thank you again for your leadership in protecting our town and for listening to the voices of our constituents.
Hi, my name is David Quick. I live at fifteen oh two Village Square. I have three things I'd like to talk to you about. They might seem different, but they're interconnected with the themes being recreation and conservation. The first is, I rode my non-e-bike down to Patriots Point at the new park. It is wonderful. There were people playing basketball, there were families in the water when it was running. Um, there were people with dogs at the dog park. You all did a great job. I will say the walking track needs some canopy trees for shade because it was blistering hot. Second, um, thank you, I'm gonna also say thank you to Gary Santos, who had the vision twenty years ago to really work for this park. So thank you, Gary, for that. Um, the second is, uh, when are our green spaces going to be off limits to roads and sports complexes? Any sort of thing that's gonna have to handle our suburban overdevelopment? I say no to a road through Laurel Hill Park is one of our last remaining green spaces. I'm finding myself opposing people who I've supported, organizations I've supported for the life of me. I don't know why anybody would want to fill wetlands, but also be an environmentalist or a conservationist. So please, we can do better. Let's go back to the drawing board and find a way to fix this solution. And then third, I'd like to talk about working on rodenticides, which is uh, rat poisons that kill our, our, our birds of prey. This is connected because I'm sure you all have seen birds of prey in Laurel Hill and Rifle Range Road and Patriots Point and even Shem Creek um, Park. We need to really figure out a way that we're not going to be poisoning our birds of prey, which are actually are, are one of our ways of controlling rodents. So thank you for all you do. I think this sign of a full parking lot and a full council chambers is a wonderful indication that people care a lot about their town. So thank you.
Jim Pozda and Richard Habersham.
Mayor, Council, I'm Jim Pozda, thirty fifty-three Caspian Court and a forty-year resident of town of Mount Pleasant. Um, I oppose the permitting and construction of Laurel Hill Parkway as part of the Highway forty-one improvements. Therefore, I strongly support the county resolution prohibiting the permitting construction of any form of Laurel Hill Parkway as a matter of law and statute. The reasons against Laurel Hill Parkway have been stated many times and have not changed. I do support the permitting and construction within the current Highway forty-one right-of-way the four-three-four plan, along with any necessary improvements to the existing intersection of Highway forty-one to US seventeen. There's no magic to Laurel Hill Parkway and I've seen no convincing data to support its construction. In addition, Charleston County has, by my count, changed the reasons for Laurel Hill Parkway three times, which weakens their position and the need for Laurel Hill Parkway. It really doesn't get any simpler. Support the improvements as proposed in the forty-one corridor and US seventeen and don't build Laurel Hill Parkway. Thank you very much for your time and efforts.
Evening. My name is Richard Habersham. I live at twenty-nine thirty-eight Bennett Charles Road in the Phillips community. I've lived there over seventy years. I've seen the traffic when there was no traffic, when forty-one was just a little back road, seventeen was a little back road. Seeing when, you know, when it started developing seventeen, when he made it four-lane and six-lane, seeing when they um, they built the bypass. All of that was farmland. That whole bypass was farmland. You don't see farmland over there no more. But um, I'm here to support the Highway forty-one court of compromise. You know, this traffic problem then started yesterday. It started when Mount Pleasant, when Mount Pleasant approved the plan, the Dunes West, Park West and Dunes West. They approved the plan for all these houses, but no plan to handle the traffic. So what, where the traffic went? All the traffic went on Highway forty-one. Now, your traffic study stated that from Joe Ross Road to, to um, the Wando River is a ten thousand car drop-off. Ten thousand car drop-off. We thought the car's going there. It's not going to Phillips. It's going in the town, the town of Mount Pleasant, going in these subdivision along Highway forty-one. Now, and all this traffic is coming through us. Our thing is that you build the Parkway, it'll take some of the traffic out of Phillips. And we're not talking about the through traffic or the truck traffic. We're just talking about the traffic that goes into Park West and Dunes West. They'll have their traffic and it'll ease the traffic in Phillips. It's like every time y'all um, improve Joe Ross Road. Yeah, it make it easy for the people going in Dunes West and Park West, but you make it worse for the people in Phillips. Come down Phillips and try to make a left turn to go to the gas station. Just, just try to make a left turn. You can't. You take, you take your life in hand, in, in your hand. You know, uh, he wasn't, um, Bessemer Road is, is a bypass. No, it's not. Bessemer Road is a nightmare. That's where all the hang-up at in Phillips. It, all the traffic stops right there at that point. Park, um, Joe Ross Road, Dunes West Boulevard, we think the traffic backs up there in Phillips. So our thing is that if you build a new road, Dunes West and Park West is not going to get no new traffic. They are going to get their traffic. Thank you.
David Gutman, Myra Richardson.
My name is David Gutman. I live at fifteen thirty-three Dean Park Circle in Mount Pleasant. Uh, I'm gonna make it short and sweet. Uh, I know most of you on the board. You said, talk to you and not as, as a council meeting, but talk to you as individuals is just what I'm gonna do. Do you know when this whole process started up until this point, there have been over three thousand comments against this project? And it seems like nobody has read them. And if they have read them, they've ignored them. I implore each of you to see if you can get a hold of those comments and read them. And you'll see what the community actually thinks. The Mount, uh, the Laurel Hill project is not gonna work. A lot of people are not happy with the wetlands. I'm not happy with destroying the wetlands. Also, I'm looking at the community. You have houses on Bessemer Road that's gonna have a highway on both sides. That's kind of ridiculous. You don't move out here for that. You know, we have a community too. Okay? We like our community. We take care of our community. We pay our taxes like everyone else. But the town is in a unique position to not allow this Laurel Hill project to continue because it's not going to solve anything. Look at where the traffic is gonna go. No one has thought of that. I think there's gotta be a better way, but the Laurel Hill Parkway is not the way to go. Uh, in that respect also, there's a cost factor involved. You could take that money and you can put it into housing that's needed into town, put it into services that's needed to town and not a wasted highway. I thank you very much for your time and please consider it.
Good day. My name is Myra Snight Richardson. I'm the president of the Hamlin Beach Community Association. I'm here to talk about, thank you first. I'm here to talk about, thank you first for considering the moratorium and working with Charleston County to protect and preserve the Galagui community. And as part of protecting the Galagui community, especially the Phillips community, this compromise will help them protect the area. It will not take away homes or businesses. This is a perfect opportunity for the traffic that belongs in the Town of Mount Pleasant to be diverted to the Town of Mount Pleasant to protect this area. I'm also here to talk about the Ten Mile community. As a part of its moratorium, these eleven acres that's being annexed into the Town of Mount Pleasant into CC, this property is not S-three, it's rural residential. If you change it to CC, you're adding more homes on the north side or the south side of Highway seventeen. This is the, a developer's dream because the people on that side in Ten Mile do not wanna change the ordinance from three acres, one house per three acres. If you change it, you're gonna change that community drastically on that side. So, before approving that, please take the time to defer it, consult with Charleston County, consult with the Ten Mile residents. They have a meeting scheduled on Saturday, planning their overlay. Please attend that meeting before passing that ordinance and making them CC. I'm asking you to please attend that meeting and find out what the people want in the Ten Mile community. The meeting is at, on Seafood Lane. The residents from Ten Mile can give you the resident address, but it's on Seafood Lane. I'm also asking you to not annex the property that's on Boston Grove Road into the Town of Mount Pleasant. Allow us to continue to work together in these communities to better and serve the Galagui communities. Yes, we are part, and we are in front of you because these properties are being annexed out of Charleston County, out of the historic districts. And people are taking advantage of that in order to build what they wanna build, including the property, I believe it's on, um, not Pat Cali, Halls Pond, y'all, Halls Pond Road in the Four Mile community. They're not next to Ask You Body. There's a, there's a road in between. They did something that was not legal. Now they're coming into the Town of Mount Pleasant to clean up the mess that they created, and you're helping them do something wrong. How many other people will do the same? Thank you.
That's all I have signed up, sir. Is there anyone who did not get the opportunity to sign up who was here to speak? If so, please come forward, give your name and address, and you have two and a half minutes.
Hi there. My name is Joan Spear. I live at eighteen forty-eight West Canning Drive in, uh, Park West. Um, I'm the past president of the Park West Master Association and have been involved in the, um, the Highway forty-one corridor expansion for eight years now. Been to many, many meetings o- over the years, and, um, I agree with, um, all of the comments that, uh, support the adoption of the resolution that would avoid, um, um, impacts to Laurel Hill Park. But it, it's clear to me that there's somebody missing from this conversation, and that would be Berkeley County because I think Highway forty-one is going to be used a lot by new residents of Del Webb. There's a large plantation. I believe it's five to eight thousand homes, um, in Berkeley County. They need to be part of this solution, and I think Ms. Lending has alluded to this as well, that, you know, we need to have them at the table because they are coming across Wando Bridge and using either forty-one, or we've seen an immense increase in traffic along Park West Boulevard. So, I mean, it, it begets a, a larger solution. It's a bigger problem, so it needs additional, um, people at the table. And I would also like to say that I am in support of the restriction of the, um, the rodenticides. I have two owlets proudly, um, because we put up a box from, uh, birds of prey, and, um, I know my neighbors conversely have got, um, bait boxes, and they use those rodenticides, and I would hate to see something happen to the two owlets. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. It's good to be here, here in front of you. I appreciate the job y'all do. It's a tough job. I'm Herb Sasse. I'm Charleston County Council member for District One, which is most of what Mr. Kowalski doesn't represent. I do in Mount Pleasant, and Rob Worman has a, a portion of it as well. But glad to be here tonight to give you some facts about Highway forty-one and about the Laurel Hill Parkway extension. Uh, I've heard a number of, of, uh, comments, uh, before this meeting that, uh, that's the reason I came tonight, was, was loaded with some facts I wanted to, to deliver to you. First, let me emphasize that Charleston County is committed to being fully transparent about this process. As you know, Charleston County believes very strongly in green space. We have a, an award-winning Green Belt program, and we also helped with property acquisition on Rifle Range Road, and we're helping to manage Laurel Hill Park. And then, a- again, of course, we all helped, all of us worked together to preserve Boone Hall. So, we all have the same, the same thoughts about that. We wanna preserve as much green space as we can. We agree with you. The county has demonstrated their commitment. We had over a hundred and sixty-five community and stakeholder meetings to work on this project. We started working on this project in nineteen, nineteen, uh, twen- excuse me, twenty-six, twenty-seventeen. So, we've been working on it a long time. We've got over seventy-two hundred comments from the public. That's a lot of input. We take that seriously. I wanna let y'all know that only twelve acres along the park's western edge need to be cleared for the Parkway. That's a little bit over than one percent of the total acreage. Fewer than two acres of wetlands will be impacted, so there's not a big impact on wetlands. And speaking about flooding and wetlands, the South Carolina Department of Environmental Services will not issue any permits unless their high standards are met. The Parkway includes measures to help divert stormwater away from Park West communities on Bessemer Road. As far as traffic and congestion is concerned, a, a number of alternatives were proposed, over twenty. The present one is the road to compromise. You know what they say about compromise? Nobody likes it. But this is the only plan that works. Without the Laurel Hill Parkway, this plan doesn't work. It fails. If the plan doesn't fail, I'm not sure it'll get approved by South Carolina DOT. I think it needs to have this, this section. Uh, we, we are doing as much as we can to preserve anything we find on the site. We've agreed to, to any historical artifacts. There's one, one, one area that might be in the Parkway. The Parkway is located completely along the west side of the park, and we will impact very little of the park. I thank y'all very, very much. I thank y'all for your, for your thoughts. And please vote, don't vote for the resolution.
Next, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Angela M. Singleton. I live at thirty-eight twenty-two Tomasky Lane. I'm also on the Historic Preservation Committee. I'm here in reference to the parcel listed, mentioned in ordinance two-five-zero-three-three and two-five-zero-three-four are part of the Charleston County Designated Historic District, the Ten Mile Historic District. The five parcel cells are zoned as Charleston County Rural Residential with one principal dwelling unit per three acres and have been zoned that way for many years prior to the application, purchasing the lot, which was in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. The Ten Mile community is working with Charleston County to create a novel district. After the second meeting, the Charleston County staff, when it was reiterated that the highest density that Charleston County staff could dose outside the urban growth boundary was a principal dwelling unit per one acre. If the resident wanted the application, submit applications for annexation into the Town of Mount Pleasant. Town Council, we are asking that you deny the annexation request for this applicant and deny rezoning. And also, we do have a meeting on this Saturday. Come out into this, uh, Ten Mile off of Seafood Road, listen to the community, and hear what they want. We had over two hundred signatures, two hundred, that opposed this. Please come out and hear us and hear what we want as a community. Thank you.
Next, please.
Gloria Walker is my name. I live at twenty-one fifty-five Rifle Range Road. And I can say that I am against the ten-foot sidewalk in my community because it'll take away the culture of the Gula Gaietsch community. I am against it because it, it will take away a lot of our culture, a lot of our understanding of having a community and a settlement. I thank you.
Good evening, Perry Warren, two thousand four Brick Hill Parkway. I just wanna thank Councilman Icafado and Councilmember Allenstein for, uh, bringing this resolution to, uh, the committee, and thank you to the Transportation Committee and full council, uh, for looking at this for us. Had a lot of people speak tonight, both in for and against. I'm a lifelong Mount Pleasant resident. I've lived off of forty-one for over twenty years. Um, I won't tie up anymore of your time, just simply like to ask anybody here tonight that opposes the road through Laurel Hill Park, would you please raise your hand? Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Good evening. I'm Fred Smalls. I live at twenty-nine fifty-nine Elijah Smalls Road. That's in the Phillips community. We, the Phillips community, fully support the proposed plan for the Highway forty-one improvement project. That's with the extension. No one understands the traffic situation better than we do in our community. No one wants to see improvements more than we do. But we don't feel that we should face the brunt of all of what we're talking about here. We have attended Mount Pleasant and Charleston Counties' chamber meetings, council meetings, and we have always advocated for fair and equitable solution to the problems on Highway forty-one. And today, we are asking that the proposed plan goes forward. We keep hearing that a roadway going through will destroy wetlands. Well, that's misleading because the proposed roadway only skirts the property. It does not go fully through Laurel Hill. Secondly, all the public outcry about the destruction of wetlands in Laurel Hill. Well, on Highway forty-one, where the Harris Tita Grocery Store complex was, the liquor store, the restaurant, all of that was wetlands, filled in, destroyed, and developed. No public outcry. Currently, right now, further down forty-one, the Lowe's Grocery Store complex is still being developed. Grocery stores, restaurants, doctor's office, car wash, still wetlands are being destroyed. But now we wanna turn around and say the destruction of wetlands in the Parkway should be protected. You can't have it both ways. The same laws that protect what you do in those subdivisions can and should protect those of us in the rural communities. There was no public outcry about destroying those wetlands because those were matters of convenience for our neighbors in the subdivisions, matters of convenience. We cannot stand by and let our community become a matter of convenience so that our neighbors can conveniently get to their homes, but I have to lose mine. We really need to think about that.
Next, please. Anyone?
Hi, I'm Margaret Popper. I live at fifteen oh-nine Barkentine Drive in Mount Pleasant. Um, first, I just wanna say, we've had a lot of conversation. I'm thrilled about the work you guys are doing with the e-bikes and the mopeds and all those other things that every community in Mount Pleasant is facing, and I just wanna say thank you for your really, really, um, strong attention to that issue. Um, I just wanna say one thing really quickly about the fireworks situation. Um, starting June thirtieth, in my neighborhood, in my backyard, every night between ten fifteen and ten thirty, for four nights in a row, M-eighties were set off by kids, I assume, who then jumped in cars, tore out the road, and went on their way. Having the third, the third night of this, I realized, oh, and we haven't even got close to Fourth of July yet. On Fourth of July, I, I then sent a note to the park and rec, um, head to say, you know, one way to keep this stuff from happening is if we left the baseball field light on, they would be much less likely to come from all over town to the Duffy Complex and set off fireworks. That, my suggestion, was not accepted. It was a three-ring circus all weekend long through last night. I don't know, when I get home tonight, it'll probably be even more. But I would say this, that, um, we had two fires on Sunday, July fifth. Um, I believe at least one of them, it required fire trucks to come and put them out. And, um, we had an interesting thing happen on Sunday at seven fifteen where police were called by one of my neighbors because kids were shooting off fireworks at each other in her backyard. And when the police arrived, they thought I had called them because, you know, I kinda do that sometimes. And, um, they never talked to her, and they never... They, one of the policemen said to these kids who are twins, um, "Well, if you're careful, just, you know, you, you can, yeah, you can set off the fireworks here." It's my understanding that on public property, fireworks are not allowed to be set off. And secondly, the second policeman who arrived because of this call actually clarified for the first policeman that he was wrong, that I was right, and that these kids should not be setting off fireworks. I'd like to have a much more extended conversation about this because it's a problem. Thank you.
There's someone come.
My name is Pat Brokhammer, and I live at thirty-five forty-five Tumer Kiln in Park West, and I would like for you all to consider voting yes for the resolution on the, um, bypassing the Laurel Hill. And I also would like for you all to do something with taking a stand on the fireworks. They've gotten out of control. Kids are shooting them right at the porches of the houses. And we have things on our porches that we would like to keep, and we don't want them to go up and fire. We also have a lot of, um, um, pine needles that are around our landscaping. Sparks can go on that. I mean, we've had a very dry summer up until the last couple days, and that isn't even taken into consideration. Why doesn't the town make a, a law on where and how long and what they can do as far as the fireworks? It's gotten out of control, and these kids are running the, the whole town and running from one neighborhood to the next, shooting off fireworks recklessly. The California fires that damaged twenty-five thousand homes started with somebody putting fireworks in their backyard. And I, I guess they don't watch the news, but this needs to be addressed, and we need to take control of our community. Thank you very much.
Next, please.
Hi, um, I'm Marcia Bosom, twenty-one oh-nine Williams Banir Court in Mount Pleasant. Wasn't gonna speak tonight, but I kinda feel moved. I live in Dunes West. I travel, um, Bessemer or forty-one all the time, and I don't see the need for the extra road. We seem to be managing very well with Bessemer and Park West, and I know forty-one is busy, but I don't really think that the people coming down forty-one are gonna turn onto Park West Boulevard and use that. I just, I don't see it at this point, and that's why I believe that just even widening forty-one a little bit will help, um, with the traffic flow. Because, I mean, really, right now, everything's working. I mean, we're working very well with Bessemer and Park West Boulevard. So, thank you. That's it.
I guess the smallest one gonna be the last one, yeah? Well, I'm not here for, not for people. I'm here really for my friends. I am the one who is in that park every day, every morning. I am going there when I am sad. I go to pray there. I always took my grandchildren there, and let me tell you, this is your last sanctuary. And if you destroy that, you have nothing, only pills. That's all. You need nature. You are part of it. So, all this talking here, where are you rushing with the road? What do you wanna build? I saw many places where during the expansion, every- I saw many places where, during the expansion, everybody built. Everybody wants to make money. Go there now. Everything is destroyed. Once you destroy it, I apologize, I am emotional. Because I saw a lot, and I do like nature. Once you destroy it, the traffic, you, all of us know the traffic is not going to be so. To, if you have straight lines and you go around, common sense, yeah? President Trump is talking about common sense. Does anybody has it here? No. I don't think so. Because you don't go around, you go straight. And if you cannot go straight, then slow down. That's all. Traffic is working fine. Everybody who moves here knew it. So, on the way home from work, try slowly, think about everything. Thanks for everything. Be grateful that you are still alive, and that's it. And enjoy the greenery. It do you better, trust me. So, that's all.
Mr. Mayor? I believe the clerk needs her name for the record.
Did we get your name and address, please? And your address? Thank you. Thank you. We're gonna take a break after this. We're gonna take a break after the last speaker. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I think you guys lowered this podium, which is great. So, Michelle Stress, five forty-five Veranda View. So, I just wanted to make a few comments. You know, I know that we are continuing, there is continuing of, of filling in wetlands. And just in response to the, the one man, two wrongs don't make a right. So, just because we're doing it here, doesn't mean that we should, it should be okay to take tw- two percent of it here. That, that doesn't make sense. We, we should stop at all, and maybe we should stop at this two percent. And then I keep hearing people say, well, it's only X percent. It's only one percent. It's only two percent. But just like one of the other speakers, small bites of an elephant, we're starting to eat that elephant. And where does that stop? And then there also seems to be a lot of, a lot of voices that are, are signifying like an us versus them. This isn't an us versus them. This is not, this is not a winner and a loser. This is, no matter which way, this looks like it's two losers. The environment is losing, and the people of Phillips community are losing. We have put a man on the moon. We are now the proud owners of a ten-thousand-year-extinct dire wolf on this planet, too, in fact. We can come up with a better plan. We have smart, smart people. This plan, this doesn't work. We can think of something better where it doesn't harm the community and it doesn't harm the park. Let's just pause and find our smart people and start over. Thank you.
Next, no, please. We've made it this far, just don't ruin it. Thank you. Thank you. It's a hot summer night, and once we lose control, it's over. All right, is there anyone else? If there is not, we're going to take a ten-minute recess. We will be back at seven forty. One, I'm calling it, one-to-one.
Gary's just voted out.
That's a good one, that's a good one.
So, you guys move, um, walk around. And he goes, I have a good life, person, I'm a good boy. He said, we got that term.
Thank you for that ten-minute break.
Yeah.
I was about to die.
Yeah. And also just to diffuse some of the tension.
Yeah. Oh, I had to go to the bathroom so bad. I was like, I'm never gonna make it.
You're too young. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Address just having.
Okay, so what is this?
Was there a? It's the first one since we've elected. And that's actually been.
I'll never vote.
I will. There's some of these things, just leave them in the county. Because we just lose, we lose money on them. They cost us more than we get from them. Waste them up. Huh? Last week.
I need to come play some pickleball. You've been telling me that for years.
I know, I need to just do it. Relaxes. I need to just do it. I would, I would. I'm more into the. Now that it's summertime, that's the time of the outside. I'm sorry. Are y'all, what, you're under seven thirty?
Seven.
Seven.
Y'all. I have a. I'm your bottom story.
Then, we'll have to. I don't. I'd rather tell, I'd rather tell them no. I'd rather tell them no. So, just to throw that one, no on this end. There's no reason to annex that. Fireworks are protected by state law, and the ones who say they're illegal have not been challenged yet. So, we can, fireworks. All right, if everyone will please be seated so we can get back into session, please. Uh-oh. Did somebody?
Yeah, no, but we don't have the ways to speak.
All right. Would everyone please be seated? Thank you. Hope you, everybody, enjoyed the break. We are on agenda item number seven, consent agenda items. There are none. So, item eight is planning, and everyone, please bear with us. We have a very long planning agenda for this evening. Mrs. Reed, yes, we're on A-one.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. This first request before you is an amendment to the Watermark Plan Development. And the proposal is to incorporate a one-acre tract of land into the PD. And I'll give you some context here. So, that property is located, it used to front Melvin Bennett and Bowman Road, just off of Chuck Dolly Boulevard. It was annexed in eighty-eight and later split zoned, as you can see here. So, the park fronting Bowman is AB, and it was rezoned to that AB in two thousand eighteen. Later, you had the subdivision in the two residential lots there fronting Melvin Bennett. So, this is the future land use, which recommends neighborhood scale. That would support both the existing AB and the proposed PD. Here's the history I just went through. Here's the proposal, just to do that one-acre tract into the PD. And what the applicant would like to do is, it's currently zoned area-wide business. They would like to come into the plan development. They, they thought about rezoning to AB-two, which would allow enterprise or a car rental. And, but with that type of use, we have what's called outdoor storage and/or display. So, most think of storage as storing, you know, junk or whatever, but it also involves the display. So, if you're renting vehicles, you're selling vehicles, that's outdoor storage and display. That is not in a, an allowed use in AB. By rezoning to AB-two, that's a much more intense rezoning that cannot be conditioned, and it would allow much more intense uses. So, the applicant has requested to come into the plan development, maintain AB-one uses, and just allow that additional use of the car rental with that outdoor display storage of the rental vehicles. The Planning Commission recommended approval with an enhanced buffer along. So, typically, you would have a buffer that is, right here, you have residential. It's not going to work for me, but you have partial residential and partial commercial uses. And there's a formula for the buffer when your lot line is adjacent to, to two different uses. The Planning Commission has recommended approval of this, making that buffer the, the full twenty-five feet for the residential, along with the eight-foot masonry wall. The Planning Committee heard this two months ago, and they, there was a motion, I think, to fail or to, to either deny or approve, but it failed. And so, it comes to you with no recommendation from the Planning Committee. Yes, ma'am?
I was just gonna say, I'd like to move to deny.
All right. We have, we have a motion to deny. And, and a second, we're in discussion.
Yes, yes.
Yes, sir.
This came to us a little, maybe the last meeting, and we were told that there was an issue with the property.
Deed restriction.
Restrictions.
Deed restrictions.
So, it was.
And why is it now changed?
Correct. So, there was an issue raised on some, a deed restriction on that portion of the property. But, and so, we took it off your agenda until that could be cleared up. And I do know that Mr. Pagliarini has received a letter from the applicant's attorney, and we were, we were told that it was okay to place it back on. So, I can let Mr. Pagliarini answer further.
Yes, sir. We requested an opinion from the applicant's legal counsel, and they certified that, in their opinion, it was not contradictory. It is also, also the position of our legal department that, in a, reading it in a light most favorable to the applicant, it is not contradictory. Of course, our opinion is not substitute for a court. Someone else wished to enforce it, they certainly could do so.
All right, the motion is to deny?
Yes, sir, mister.
These, these areas are very sensitive areas, for sure, between commercial and residential, so they need a lot of care. What I, what I would be suggesting, just so that I'd be on the record, was that they maintain their buffer plantings as described here, but also in the front buffer areas. And those buffer areas. buffer areas and those buffer areas would include the, um, the existing trees and vegetation. And where those are not sufficient, they would add to those. Uh, would also suggest that the maintenance of the existing trees and veget, uh, the, the retention of the grand trees has shown, could you show that other slide? The maintenance of, uh, the retention of the grand trees and other trees has shown will be, um, mandatory that they'd have low-impact lighting to avoid light intrusion into the other areas and they have the eight-foot masonry wall, all of which would give them the ability to run a, a relatively low-impact business, um, adjoining, uh, residential. So, at least that's my feeling on it.
Mr. Rambo.
Yeah, so, I think it's important, and we got some emails about this, but I think it's important to note that this property will be developed at some point. There's a number of allowed uses that they currently can use that, in my opinion, are more intensive than what this applicant is proposing. And they could do that without getting additional approvals, um, which, uh, this approval, as if we go with what Planning Commission recommended, enhances the buffer between the residential and commercial. So, to me, while I, I know that there are people that would like to not see this developed, that's not a reality. So, we kind of have to choose between two things. Um, and I think the developer is being responsible here. Um, and I am, that, that's why I'm in favor of, well, I guess against the denial motion.
Ms. Hart?
We were sent a list, um, in an email that mentioned some of the deed restrictions. And on it, it says, vehicle rental or sales without outdoor storage, parking lot or structure, I mean, that's on the list of what was part of the deed restriction. If we know some of the history of this, they originally asked for AB two because this was R1 and it was, AB two was denied. Um, and that's how they got AB one. And when they were, uh, wanted to change it to commercial, this was sort of a compromise. So, they came up with deed restrictions in order to get the AB zoning and get out of the R1 zoning that this property was. And I feel like this seems against the deed restrictions that were promised in order to get the AB zoning. And when you talk to the surrounding neighbors, this just isn't a use. They're worried about light pollution and different things and the outdoor storage is just not a use, um, that they're willing to put up with, I guess. But another question I have, if you look at the purple and red, um, image of the lot, there was a piece that still said R1, um, at the back of the lot. And here we go. The purple is what's AB, but they're wanting to extend that through that tan piece or?
That was a zoning line mistake.
Okay, so it's not actually getting right. And I'm confused about adding it to a PD that's across the street, down the road. Why did it need to be added to the PD rather than just rezone?
Uh, well, that was the applicant's choice. Uh, with a PD, you can condition it to just the car rental with outdoor parking. Um, with AB two, you can't condition it. And, um, I'm not sure, the deed restrictions, I'm not, I'm not real familiar with the history of that, but I do know that the town zoning does not, we don't recognize those deed restrictions, so we can't enforce them. Um, so even if they promised or are deed restricted to do that, I know the town couldn't necessarily enforce that. But through the PD, you could condition those things. And then it would be a town, um, enforcement issue if they didn't comply with that PD.
So, I guess this is for Mr. Pagliarini. What do, what do the surrounding residents, what recourse do they have when somebody has deed restrictions and they go against them? They just have civil case or something? I mean, how is that not enforced?
Right, I've already stated our opinion that, that the use would be permissible, but if anyone disagreed, they could go to a court and seek enforcement of those restrictions if they so desired.
Okay, it's just difficult when they make promises in order to get a zoning change and then they, the next thing you know, they're applying to go against them.
Where, do we know when those deed restrictions were placed? Were they part of the process? Uh, Councilman Santos, you and I were on council when, when I believe this came the first time. And I thought I remembered that. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that I know that's when they were placed, I'm just asking.
Sir, I don't have the date, I have the actual restrictions.
Okay, okay. Because that's what I vaguely remember, um, from this, was that it would be protected by deed restrictions.
Were you raising hands?
Yes, sir.
Yes, um, so this is, uh, Ms. Reed, this is zoned, uh, AB one, uh, correct. Uh, what, what are, um, some of the other intense uses that this, um, that would fit under this zoning as it currently is today?
Uh, you can have retail, restaurants, um, let's see. Uh, drive-throughs, uh, you can have vehicle sales without outdoor. Assisted living, church, daycare, vet clinic, medical office, you can have a lot of.
So, it's a pretty wide, um, category.
Yeah.
Um, so, my, my thought on this is, is I, I kind of echo what Mr. Rambo, um, stated. I think a business that's operating during, um, the day, regular business hours, um, would be preferable to a lot of those uses. I think if you look next door, there's an auto repair shop. If you look across the street, there's an equipment rental, uh, facility. Um, so, and in my mind, this is, um, compatible with those commercial uses that are along Bowman Road. Um, and, and I think that, um, the masonry wall and the, the tree vegetation buffer, um, I think would go a long way towards, um, mitigating some of the impacts with the, um, the homes that are behind it. Um, I'm trying to remember back from, um, Planning Committee, there was a discussion about the wa, the masonry wall, um, in the portion. It's kind of where, the map doesn't show, but there's actually a really big kind of industrial-type building at the behind, behind twelve thirty-two Melvin Bennett. Um, what's, what's the plan for that, that line or that, that property line? Um, where on the slide, we see the masonry wall ends, um, towards the back of that residential property?
Yes, sir, so that was one of the conditions that they would have to do. So, that eight-foot masonry wall is a requirement when you're adjacent to residential. So, um, you would have to, there you can see it. Um, you would have to do the eight-foot masonry wall and the twenty-five foot buffer. Even though, you're correct, there, this is a residence, I think there's some sort of operation in the rear, but it's still a residential property. Um, I think whatever's operating in the back is ancillary to the residence. So, they would do the masonry wall, the twenty-five foot buffer. And then here, they would be able to drop down to the smaller buffer and no fence because they're adjacent to an existing, uh, commercial use.
Would it require an amendment to extend that masonry wall, um, up that residential property line? Or is that?
That's already in the Planning Commission recommendation, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if we are ready to vote, the motion is to deny. All in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
Aye.
Who, how many were there?
Three.
All right. I'm sorry, oh, four. Okay.
Oh, it's four.
All right, all opposed?
No.
No.
So, that by four, four, the, uh, the motion does not succeed.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve with modifications and the modifications would be on Bowman Road.
This is first reading.
Okay.
And that was the first of thirteen planning items we have tonight. If you're trying to plan your evening, you might want to.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I ask a parliamentary question? So, since the vote was unsuccessful, does that mean it, and there's one member missing, that would be a tiebreaker? Does, so it automatically gets put on next month's agenda?
There, there can be an additional vote tonight, a different motion could be made.
To, to approve, but if we don't, it, since there was, it was not actually denied, it essentially is a deferral. Am I correct or incorrect?
Um, there would be no denial. I think you'd be correct that it would, um, it would be, be brought back and it'd be subject to our, um, period in our new code. Well, this was submitted before, so it'd be subject to the six-month period. If nothing happened, it would automatically fail.
So, it doesn't need a motion to defer to bring it back?
No motion is needed to bring it back.
Okay. Let's move on to item number two. This is an annexation of a half acre of land on, uh, La Cannon Lane.
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero three seven.
Item number three is, is to zone the same parcel seventeen twenty-four La Cannon Lane.
Move for approval.
Have a motion to approve and we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero three eight.
All right, now we're picking up some speed. Um, we're on item four, which is a rezoning as area-wide business one district, uh, point six-six acre.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, I believe this, does this involve, no, that's another one, I'm sorry, the Sweet Grass Basket District.
Correct, and there is no, um, the proposal is to rezone it to AB. You can see it's surrounded by AB and there is no request to remove it from the Sweet Grass Basket overlay district. So, those additional standards would still apply.
Okay. All right, the motion to approve, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero three nine.
Flipping the page on item five, this is an ordinance providing for annexation of point seven eight acres on twenty-nine sixty-five Highway seventeen north.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion to approve and a second, we're in discussion. No comments, all right? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero four zero.
Item number six is to rezone, uh, CC.
Move to approve.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and we have a second, any discussion? Again, this will remain in the Sweet Grass Basket overlay.
Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero four one.
Item number seven is the ordinance, uh, providing for the five-year update.
Move to approve.
Move to approve.
Plan, thank you very much. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Um, just real quickly, I know that, um, one of the, the groups here tonight, uh, made some comments during public, uh, comment, um, regarding a couple of these chapters. Um, is that something you can speak with them and, and get their feedback?
Of course.
And then, uh, what's the process for incorporating that feedback?
It would, um.
If applicable.
Yeah, any amendments would occur at second reading anyway. So, what we can do is if we meet with them, any additional comments or input that we get, we'll share that with you all and you would, you would make that decision as, as an addendum at the, at the final reading of this.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right, the motion is to approve item seven, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number two five zero four two.
Item B, old business, and these are final reading. The first is, uh, an ordinance to provide a temporary moratorium on acceptance and processing of major subdivision applications in Charleston County historic districts.
Mr. Chair, move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, this would match the counties and therefore, um, in my summary, please correct me if I'm wrong, um, provide a disincentive for anybody to annex into the town so that they could get around the county's moratorium. Motion is to approve, we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries.
Final reading, ordinance number two five zero three five.
Number two is also final reading, an ordinance to amend chapter one fifty-four Development Impact Fees of the Town of Mount Pleasant to provide an exemption from development impact fees for, uh, properties required to relocate as a result of the proper exercise of eminent domain.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We are in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Ms.
Yes, sir, you go.
Mr. Pagliarini, I believe, um, the committee recommended, um, some language amendment, would you please summarize that for me?
Yes, sir, um, there was an email sent to council summarizing, but there are two, um, items that were discussed by committee. The first is to change the relocated development area from town corporate limits to the town planning area, which would be a larger area. It would encompass properties, um, outside of town incorporated, but within our planning area. The second was to require that any funds received by owners, tenants that could under state or federal law be utilized for payment of impact fees, such as relocation or re-establishment fees, to be paid to the town towards applicable impact fees.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to amend to incorporate the second bullet point there.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. That was the one about, um, if there's any compensation coming from other echelons of government?
Yes, sir.
That we could collect those as impact fees?
Yes, sir, there are relocation and re-establishment fees sometimes, uh, that accompany eminent domain that could be used towards these. And it, that portion would not be exempt.
Got it. All right, is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor, we're on the amendment, all in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the amendment passes. Now, we are back to discussion on the primary motion to approve as amended.
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to make a motion to amend with, um, the first bit of language that Mr. Pagliarini, um, brought up, um, that changes it to, um, planning area versus town limits.
All right. Is there a second?
Question?
Okay.
Are you suggesting do number one and not number two, or doing them one by one?
Uh, no, I was, um, proposing that we amend it so, um, if a business is located in an unincorporated part of our town and it move, and it moves to a, um, town location, that they also be exempt from, um, development impact fees.
But not the second item that, uh, that was mentioned?
That one was just.
That passed. Okay, yeah.
First one passed, this is the second one that was mentioned. Is, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second, all right, we're in discussion.
So, I think this is something that, that we need to, to decide. There is a, um, a business that, um, has relocated or is relocating from Wando Park as a result of the new, um, access for semi-trucks to the port. It's a longstanding business, um, that, you know, already generates traffic in our town and they're moving to a town location, um, at an impact fee cost of a hundred and sixty-ish thousand dollars. Um, so, I thi, I think we need to decide whether, um, an existing business that's already operating in town, already generating, generating traffic, um, by moving to a new location, uh, through no action of their own, uh, but through eminent domain, whether, um, we think it's appropriate or not to charge them a lot of money to, to switch locations.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I know that with the Economic, uh, Development Committee, um, we're taking up impact fees right now is, is, is one thing, but the other thing is, by it being in that unincorporated area, they've never paid a business license fee, is that correct? And they haven't paid an impact fee to the town. That'd be correct. So, yeah, I'm not in favor of, uh, I understand if somebody gets eminent domain and has to move and they've already given to the town and we're taking up items like that in, um, obviously in the, in the committee and thank you to the committee for that. But to me, they haven't paid any impact fee yet to the, to the town. So, I don't, I don't want to excuse them just because they're going from unincorporated into the Town of Mount Pleasant. I definitely think they, we need to pay the fair share on that.
Any other, yes, sir, Mr. Chapman?
Um, Mayor, if we're, if you're suggesting we do this to that particular business, that business is being relocated because of a federal project, in which case that individual receives all of the issues, all of the funding for relocation as well as improving their business. As I think Mr. Pagliarini has eloquently stated, because he's been involved in relocations like this before. So, I would not be in favor of this motion either, because he's already getting what you're asking us to put in for everybody else. you're asking us to put in for everybody else, but if it's just for this particular person or business, they're already getting it.
Alright, any other comments? Alright, the motion is to, uh, amend to, um, extend this to our planning area, which would result in businesses not in the town, um, not having to pay an impact fee. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, the motion was to approve.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Sorry.
The motion was to approve. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, the noes have it, the motion. Alright, the motion fails. We're back to the primary motion to approve. Uh, what we did amend with the first amendment, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Final reading ordinance number two five zero two nine.
Number three, um, item number three, this is an annexation.
Yeah, this is final reading for, um, annexation of this point nine-six acre parcel. You can see it here in blue off of Boston Grill Road.
Motion to approve items three and four.
Second.
Alright. Um, Mr. Paglioni, may I just ask a parliamentary point? We know we can't zone anything until we've annexed it. Um, is it a better idea to just do them one at a time?
A- any council member can wish that these matters be separated, and we'll have to restate the motion on item number three.
Okay. Right now, the motion is to approve both. If there's a council member that's okay with the annexation, but not the zoning, or other way around.
If you would like me to.
I'm a no vote anyway. It's not going to change my mind, but it's, it's still.
Well, then I'm leaving them together.
Alright. Alright, we're in discussion. We have a motion to approve items three and item four together. One is the annexation, one is the zoning. Um, I'm going to be a no vote, uh, on this. Um, I, I don't think it serves the town purpose to bring in less than an acre, um, for something like this and the amount of services and things that we'll be providing. Um, I, I just, I, I don't like cherry picking like this, and I'm a no vote. I don't see the benefit. Alright, all in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Mr. Tinkie. So, the motion carries.
Final readings of ordinances two five zero three one and two five zero three two.
Move to defer.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to defer, um, item five, which, um, I believe would also defer item six as well, because we can't zone if, if we have not annexed. We have a motion and a second to defer. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Um, so I originally, um, seconded the motion to approve these at the last meeting. Um, since that time, um, thanks to the, the help of, uh, one of our nearby residents, Ms. Fran White, um, I've learned more about the underlying zoning of that property. It's currently zoned, um, one house per three acres. Uh, if we bring this in as community conservation, it would be zoned, um, three homes per acre, and so we're talking about, um, adding twenty-plus homes, um, to that initial zoning. I think, you know, there's a ten-mile, um, community meeting coming up on Saturday. I'd like to get some more clarity about what the long-range plan is for, for the, these properties and the ones around them. Um, I think there's a natural assumption that it's up against the Tupelo subdivision, which on its face appears to have high density, um, but that's actually not true. The, the Tupelo neighborhood is about one unit per acre. It just has a lot of open space around the subdivision. Um, so I think we need to be very careful and deliberative, uh, before we approve and upzoning with everything that's going on at the county level.
Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to defers items five and six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion. One, one note, motion carries. Alright, this moves us to item nine, committee action items, which is finance committee. Uh, Mr. Rambo.
Um, the finance committee discussed a request for funding from the Snowden Schoolhouse Association. The committee recommends allocating ten thousand dollars to the Association for Emergency Weatherization of Long Point Schoolhouse.
Second.
Alright, motion and second, we are in discussion. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll just add just one note. Um, the school was moved to Snowden, um, but it is historic because it was in Mount, in Mount Pleasant proper, in the city limits, so that's why we're, one reason we're doing that. Item ten, uh, council new business. Section A one, adoption of a resolution expressing support for alternative Highway forty-one corridor improvements to avoid Laurel Hill Park impact.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. We are in discussion. Um, let's see, everyone got a, a copy? Is that going to come up on the screens? Because I know in discussions with some council members, there are a few, uh, proposed, just some, uh, word changes. Ms. Chapman, would you like?
Yes, sir. Um, first of all, Mayor, at our commi- our transportation committee, I mentioned the fact that since at least twenty-seventeen, this project has been one of our most serious traffic congestion problems in the town. And we need to make sure that we work with county council to do the right thing. Right now, we've got pretty much a half and half issue of what the right thing is. And I think whatever we have to say in this resolution to make sure we don't lose the over one-hundred-and-sixty million dollars available to fix this problem, we don't lose because we do not, in terms of working with the county, thumb our nose at them, so to speak. Um, there's one paragraph which I would like to suggest that it's on page one, and that it says, whereas the town council continues to support and encourage improvements to Highway forty-one. Leave that in, but remove the however town council opposes the destruction of Laurel Hill Park for the construction of roadways, and then on the next page, page two, the whereas says, town council expressly opposes the construction of the two-lane Southern Parkway from Highway forty-one to Park West Boulevard through Laurel Park, known as the Southern Parkway, and for a lot of people here, they called it the Laurel Hill Parkway. It's called in the project, the Southern Parkway. We leave that in. That says the same thing. It just says it in a, a kinder way, if you will.
Right.
And we need to work with county council as a whole to make this project work. And the faster we do it, the better off we will all be. And I'm surprised that some of the people that live on Pes- Bessenger haven't come in here and complained that their neighbors want to leave all that traffic on Bessenger, but they haven't.
Bessemer.
On, on Bessemer. So Bessemer, uh, will continue, possibly continue to get the tra- uh, traffic. And there are ways to come up with a suitable plan, but not have to go through the, the parkway, that was, to use the Southern Parkway.
Okay. I, I know you made a motion, but let me get, I got the destruction part, so I want to make sure that we've got all the words that you want, um.
We, on the first page, we leave in, whereas the town council continues to support and encourage improvements to Highway forty-one. We remove the rest of that, which says, however, town council opposes the destruction of Laurel Hill Park for the construction of roadways. We, we don't, we don't destroy the entire park
Right.
with, with the, what's called the Southern Parkway, but where, uh, the, the paragraph which says, whereas town council expressly opposes the construction of the two-lane Southern Parkway from Highway forty-one to Park West Boulevard through Laurel Park, parentheses, the Southern Parkway, end parentheses, we leave that in, because we oppose that. We oppose that. So that's, that's my, I guess, suggested amendment.
Alright.
We're saying generally the same thing, but we're not going into detail saying we're destroying it, because that road takes twelve of seven-hundred-and-fifty or seven-forty-five acres.
Okay.
We're not completely destroyed it, but that's my.
Is, is everyone clear on the wording of, of the amendment?
No.
Do you have the resolution? Okay, it's not on the screen.
There was no second, right? There was no second.
Uh, there was no second yet. Is there?
So,
Yes, Fran.
I mean, I don't know if it needs further clarification, but he's just basically suggesting that we drop half of that sentence and just restate it later in the paper. Is what he's suggesting. We're, we're saying it twice about destruction of the park. I'm not, but I swear.
Mr. Paglioni, is the chair allowed to second? I know there's
Yes.
uh, different opinions on that.
Yes.
Chair seconds for the purpose of discussion, like, because I see what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Uh, at one point, we're accusing the plan of destroying the entire park. It does not destroy the entire park.
Right.
But we are expressly opposing the Southern Parkway, uh, going into the park.
Right. In, in the same resolution.
Yes, in the same resolution.
And I'm suggesting we keep that part.
Alright, yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, um, and, and thank you. I, I certainly respect, um, Mr. Chapman's opinion. Um, I think that this resolution, as it's written, does a pretty good job of threading the needle, um, on our opposition uh, to Laurel Hill Park Road, uh, or Highway, um, and our cooperation with county council. I think that, that, you know, that the fundamental issue here is the destruction of Laurel Hill Park, and I guess we could, um, debate how much of an impact that has, uh, to the park, but I think that's a fundamental part of our opposition um, to this road project is the impact that it's going to have, um, to the forest, to the wetlands, and, and for that reason, I think destruction of Laurel Hill Park is absolutely, um, crucial to, to be part in this resolution. Otherwise, people may question why we're opposed to the Laurel Hill, uh, portion of this project, so um, I, I, again, certainly respect Mr. Chapman's opinion, um, but I, I feel like striking that language would water down this resolution and, um, perhaps lead to more questions about what our intent in bringing this forward is.
I, I would, I would just add, and I think we need to be careful here because we are building, um, a sports complex in a park that was purchased with green belt funds, and we have maintained that we are not destroying the park, but we are disturbing more acres. If this is only two, we're disturbing over three, uh, acres of wetlands, and, um, I think we need to not set ourselves up for criticism from others telling us, um, hey, you're destroying wetlands and you're destroying a park. You're paving it, you're putting up lights and things. Um, this does not destroy the entire park.
Is it possible to put the resolution, do we, do we have it? They can be posted on the screen?
Um, I, I thought it would. Is the resolution not on the screen? It's not. They don't, there's not a screen part of it. Alright, we're in discussion on, on the motion to, to, uh, the amendment, um, to just remove the word destruction, the section destruction of the park. Any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of the, uh, amendment to remove that, please say aye.
Aye.
Who are the ayes?
Three, okay.
Mike?
Mr. Tinkie.
Me. Alright. Those opposed?
No.
No.
No. Did everybody, no? Were you, no?
No, okay, so the motion fails for three. Or five. Yes.
Um, okay, so a few thoughts. Um, one, uh, again, I've said this every time this comes up, and I think someone in public comments said it, but the shortest distance between two points is a straight line. Um, and that's what people are going to take. I, I really have never understood this compromise. Um, Highway forty-one is already not a neighborhood road. It is a very unsafe road. You can't cross it already. So the original plan, option one, actually addressed those concerns and addressed concerns of even rebuilding homes that were there. The, how we got from option one to this convoluted thing that we are at now is a mystery to me. It's absurd. Um, I also heard, and I like this, it, what is proposed is longer, slower, and more expensive. I think that sums it up pretty well. Um, also, as a sidebar, I'm not exactly sure why the Coastal Conservation League or the Southern Environmental Law Center are advocating for destroying forest. That's, uh, weird to me as well. Uh, anyway, uh, this resolution is just that. It's, it's a resolution. Um, it's not actually doing anything, uh, but we as a council do have the power, uh, to do something. And that is withdraw municipal consent. Um, we, this project has to tie into Dunes West Boulevard, um, which, Mr. Paglioni, correct me if I'm wrong, is a town-owned road, correct? And they would need municipal consent in order to make that tie-in.
That is our position, yes, sir.
Well, it's my position that we should deny and revoke that consent. And whether that's the politically correct thing to do at the moment, I, I don't know, don't really care. Um, but that's my thoughts. Um, I don't think it, I don't know that that was on the agenda, so.
No.
But what I will do is ask that the, uh, transportation committee, uh, discuss that at next month's meeting and bring that back to council, because, uh, I'm tired of a pillow fight. Like, we need to fight with some teeth, so.
And let me add to, um, we, this council voted, uh, I said this at the transportation committee, that, not this iteration of council, but Mount Pleasant Town Council voted, um, not to give municipal consent on a plan that was almost identical to this. I can't remember if it was seven A, seven B. Does anybody? Seven A. It was seven, and that was in twenty, what year was that vote? Twenty-twenty, I believe? In, in, in twenty-twenty? So, yeah, so it was four or five years ago, um, at the committee, and we will probably go into executive session because it does involve legal advice, um, our, the opinion of our attorney on whether that prohibits, um, or, or that revokes the, the local consent. Um, because what we did not expect was them drawing another line just a little to the side of the one that we said could not hook into the same spot on Park West Boulevard. Uh, Ms. Santos, you probably remember that. You and I were here. Yeah.
And I think y'all were here, weren't you? Yeah, that was after y'all ran council.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Akafani.
So, well, first I want to thank council for, for bringing us in transportation, for bringing us, and thank you to the citizens for coming out and speaking. It's very important that your voices are heard. Um, yeah, I spoke with, uh, spoke with some of the original, the original caretaker of the property and, uh, and possibly the trust, but, you know, John Muller, um, what he stated was, his vision was that Laurel Hill would be an oasis in a sea of development, and that is what we're seeing right now. So that is what I'm going to base my vote on tonight, and it's pretty much that simple. This property, original intent was preservation by one man wanting to preserve it for all of the citizens and residents to enjoy. Um, that will just quickly state, the Rifle Range Road, original purpose was to put a sports complex out there, was why it was purchased, so that is a bit of a difference here. But I think that, I, I'll restate that just
Mr. Tinkie.
As the newest member on council, I, in 2023, I ran to protect and preserve and expand the green space in the town, and that's in all places throughout the town. Also, to improve and provide safe roads and pathways, and we're doing that, but also to preserve and expand the cultural and historic areas and districts and work collectively with the settlements. Ongoing projects have been improving 41, as mentioned in public comment, and certainly has been happening in the transportation committee. Those have been substantial, they'll be continued, and they're, including Stockdale that was mentioned before, Highway 41, 17, and 41 is another area to be looking at that can be improved either with a roundabout or a flyover. So I think it's important to step back on this. You know, if we go ahead and improve the 434 at the same time we look at these others and the improvements that we have already ongoing, I think we have time to really make that happen. It's time to do that and protect it. Just because we have ruined other areas doesn't mean we continue to ruin them. We've got to stop at some point, and I think for me, that's why I feel like we've got to stop now. So I will be voting for the resolution.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to my fellow council members and for Mayor Haney putting this on the transportation committee agenda. I think, you know, we just passed a moratorium on major subdivisions at the settlement communities. I think that we're demonstrating to the county that we want to work with you on that issue, but we need the county to also work with us on this issue. And, you know, it was clear from the language of the public comments, there's a lot of talk about compromise and, you know, this is a great compromise. Compromise takes two parties, and I feel that our town's residents weren't a party to that compromise. It was thrust upon us. And so I think there's a lot of opportunity for us to work together on these projects. We just need the county to come to us with an open mind and not fixated on the so-called compromise, because I don't think that our residents are a party to that compromise. I think that's evident by the number of people who came out here tonight. And so I hope that they will receive this information and hear us with hopefully a unanimous or near unanimous vote and understand that we need to get together and work on a solution for 41, which I'm optimistic that we can find, that does not impact Laurel Hill Park, doesn't create any additional impacts to the Phillips community. And so I think we've got the time to do that. I'm grateful for everybody's willingness to discuss this issue tonight, and I will be obviously a yes vote on this resolution.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Ms. Chapman.
Well, first of all, there are alternatives. I don't think there's any question, there are some alternatives. I had the pleasure of working with county council for three years to put the compromise that went out at Joe Rouse, as well as some other improvements that were done after three years, and making the request to finally get the bids done for a project to be accomplished during the day instead of being out there in the middle of traffic at night, which is why they got no bids to start with. So I know there are other improvements to be made, but I really think that this council needs to give some thought to how you work with somebody and don't thumb your nose at them, which is what some wording in here does. That's all I was trying to do with the minor revision to this resolution. And I think we need to give that some thought, that $160 million, which I know North Charleston would love to have, I know James Island would love to have, I know Charleston would love to have for West Ashley and other parts of the county. We need to work positively with county council to come up with a solution. But suggesting extravagant wording doesn't do that, and that's why I made the suggestion.
Understood. Yes, sir. Mr. Rambo.
One final point. I think Charleston County Council needs to listen to its residents. If you look at the 1% sales tax extension that they tried to pass, you look at the Highway 41 area, it got crushed in that area because they don't trust county council to implement the funds from that after this whole debacle. So I don't know, I don't know how to get them to listen, but.
Yes, sir. Mr. Akafani.
I, that's a good point, and I think that point is sometimes forgotten. We're also county residents. I mean, we're Mount Pleasant residents.
And we're county residents.
So I think that point is forgotten sometimes, so I think that's the point we need to bring up.
All right. The motion is to approve the resolution expressing support for alternative Highway 41 corridor improvements to avoid Laurel Hill impacts. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right. Resolution carries. Number two is another resolution in support of Senate Bill S. 0246. This would address pesticide products that are aimed at rodents but are in a secondary way killing our birds of prey.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. This was looked at at police judicial and legal, and our committee passed that on and wants us to pass this resolution. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, so this one's, I think, a very important issue for the town. Councilwoman Hyatt, Councilman Tinkie and I visited the Birds of Prey Center where they showed us photos and videos of what rodenticide or this particular rodenticide does to our birds of prey. Once they eat a rat that's ingested this poison, the bird also dies. I think they said maybe one or two had, one had survived out of 20-something that had tested positive for it. I think that what we're asking the state legislature to do is to allow municipalities to come up with their own rules about the use of these poisons. I think that's an important thing for the state to allow us to do, and then I hope that we can work on, in the meantime, work on some ways to encourage businesses and residents to decrease the usage of these poisons like Kiawah Island has done. And so I'm not sure if we need a separate motion to send this issue to the Green Commission as well, or if that's just sort of implied by this action.
Sure, that was taken care of at PJL.
Okay, good.
I would just say one other thing on that. The, I think the progressive pest control companies already have alternatives, and I've called a couple of the big ones, and if they're asked, they have alternative uses that don't have the anticoagulants in them, so I think there's ways to get it done.
All right. All those in favor of passing the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three is first reading, please remember that, of an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. This came through the committee. Everything is in order, and it is a standard and good franchise agreement between the town and Loomis Fire. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number 25043.
Also, first reading and ordinance to amend sections 73.34 and 73.99. These have to do with e-bikes on sidewalks and the penalties. And again, this is first reading.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Paglioni, in a nutshell, because there are a lot of people here for this issue tonight, what, if you'll just tell us what we're.
Yes, sir. These are on the screen. You'll see that there are two proposed amendments. The first is highlighted in front of you, Part D, which would change the speed limit from 10 to 15 miles per hour. I think that recommendation was made by some of our bike advocate groups and adopted by PJL. The second is to, the age, so that persons under the age of 18 can be prosecuted. This came from our prosecutor and our police department to assist with prosecution.
And I just want to say for the record, the biggest problem is not true e-bikes. True e-bikes don't go over 20 miles an hour, they don't have over 750-watt engine. The biggest problem is these things that are not e-bikes under state law, they're actually mopeds, and that's where the crackdown is going to be. And those are the ones that you see passing you when you're riding on the street. So regular e-bikes themselves are really not the huge issue here, although there was some carelessness, but that's going to be an educational campaign. But these others are mopeds and are operating in violation of state law. All right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're right. It's the carelessness of these young kids that are operating them. They're jumping the sidewalks, they're going, we have elderly people, for instance, out of town center that are walking around, and they come flying around the corner and they jump the curbs and scare them half to death, and that's just the way they're doing it. And they'll probably leave and come by, and I think, I think we needed to do something to stop that because it's not fair for our older citizens to be scared to death because of these young kids are not being or operating these vehicles properly.
Thank you. All right. The motion is to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries.
First reading, ordinance number 25036.
So flip to the back, please. Item number five, approval to construct the Rainbow Bridge Memorial.
Move to approve.
Second.
And this came by, I guess by our new regulation, it had to go to the Historical Commission, and they sent it to us with their blessing.
Yes, sir.
Because this is a monument.
It is, and when you first saw it, it was going to be at Shim Creek Park. The new location, approved location per historical is out at Park West at the trailhead to the Laurel Hill Trail. And there is an approved maintenance plan that the applicant owner will, will maintain it, so that will all be taken care of.
All right, and we thank our residents for bringing this idea to us. Motion is to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Old business, item B, there is none. Item 11 is to adjourn. If there's no further business before this council, we stand adjourned.